So that I'd like to do a sound check with the regular moment.
I hear it in some place, but I can't tell where it's coming from.
Director Romer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Marcia. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Big run button. I wish everything goes away.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Maragorinda Fire District to order and we'll start with a rule call.
Director Danziger?
Here.
Director Jex?
Here.
Director Jorgens?
Here.
Director Romer?
Here.
Director Romer is participating by Zoom and President Hassler.
Here. And then would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which we sent under God, in his book.
With liberty and justice for all.
And open for public comment?
We would have open for public comment on the closed session items. We do not have any attendees. We have no public comment.
And so do we close the meeting now for the closed session?
Now we can adjourn into closed session and the time is 6:01.
Hello?
I'm going to lead this meeting and now you're going to go into the
Wow, that's close.
Yeah.
So there.
And the time is 7:03?
Okay.
We can reconvene the meeting?
Okay, we'll call the meeting, the regular meeting to board, the board to order and we'll start with a roll call.
Director Dan Ziger?
Here.
Director Jex?
Here.
Director Jorgens? Director Romer?
Here.
And Director Romer's participating by Zoom from Victor, Idaho. And President Hassler?
Here.
Item five, report of closed session action.
There's nothing to report.
Item six, announcements, brief information only reports related to meetings attended by a director at district expense.
Nope.
None? Questions and informational comments from board members and staff? None? Communications received? We've received no communications. Fire chief updates will begin with the finance report.
Good evening, directors. We have a brief finance report this evening. We'll start with the strike team reimbursement. The strike team receivable estimated for fiscal year 2025 is $1.7 million. We've received payments of $1.1 million, so the net receivable outstanding is $556,000. Fiscal year '25 represents estimated strike team activity to date, and we received $305,000 in payments in February of 2025. Next slide. Tunnel East Bay Hills financial update. The project budget was $6.3 million. We have invoiced to CalFire through December 31st, $6.1 million, and we have received payments from CalFire of $6.1 million, so there's no outstanding receivable. We have expenses paid but not yet invoiced of $110,000, so the total expenses outstanding are $110,000. Total expenses to date are $6.1 million, which represent 98.3% of the total budget. The grant closed on March 15th of 2025 and all final reports and invoices are to be submitted by April 15th. Treasury bill update, the district now has $22 million invested in treasury bills. The treasury bill maturities are listed below, and the staff will project cash flows to determine the amount of reinvestment available when treasury bills mature. Next slide. Other items, the board approved OPEB and pension contributions were made on March 12th. OPEB was $428,000 and the pension was $1.1 million. The interim audit is scheduled for the week of April 7th. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the human resource update.
In paramedic recruitment, application period remains open until May 4th. Firefighter paramedic trainee oral board interviews will be hosted next week on March 26th, 27th, and 28th.
How many can I?
We have, we've invited 27 applicants. And then for the fuels mitigation specialist, interviews were conducted last week. We have a top candidate, we've, we've submitted a conditional offer and that person accepted, and he's going through the background process at this time. And then regarding employment changes, fire engineer, paramedic one, Dan Johansson will be retiring effective March 29th. Engineer Johansson served MOFD for almost 24 years. The temporary project coordinator and assistant project coordinator for the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fieldlight Project was a grant-funded limited-term position, and those ended on March 15th. And finally, the temporary administrative services director, Carol Atwood, started on March 5th, and she will be with us throughout the budget process. And unless there are any questions? and she will be with us throughout the budget process. And unless there are any questions, that concludes my update.
And, and Carol is there as, as needed basis?
Correct.
She's on, so, okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Fire marshal report. Good evening, directors. Last month, there was an inquiry regarding the outstanding number of juniper cases. As you can see on the slide, uh, the number of open cases from years prior is a total of twenty-six. Two of those are juniper cases. Extensions were granted for both residents. As far as state mandated inspections, uh, my team completed five apartment inspections this month, or the month of February, and we transitioned to Saint Mary's dormitory inspections for the beginning in March in hopes to complete those by, uh, May and by graduation in May. This concludes the fire prevention report. Are there any questions?
Uh, I, oh, go ahead. You go first. Oh, okay. Um, I, I, I ask this question oftentimes for the fire marshal. Um, e-occupancy, schools?
Schools are scheduled to begin in September.
So for right now, all schools are in compliance? Everything is clear?
Not from prior years, no.
So, so, yeah, September, we're gonna start again, but what about violations that are currently still not resolved? I mean, it seems like it, it just seems like a good, to me, being on the board for years I've been on, it seems like it goes on all year. We never resolve them, and then you start again, and they're still piling on. I mean, is there some, some point where those are resolved?
Yeah, so I have a plan for that. So the health and safety code requires the inspections to occur annually, so in the past, the inspections have remained from previous years and never been closed out. So the plan is to not drop, uh, the, the violations that continue to occur, but the plan is to begin, start fresh, begin the inspections in September, create a plan of correction for any items that have not been corrected from previous years, and put them on the new list in September of violations.
So the, the, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking public schools. I know that we have other schools, but, but the public schools, they know right now, they know what their violations are, right?
Correct.
And, and you, and you telling me that you won't check them until September?
No, there's ongoing correspondence with the fire inspector. They're emailing, uh, pictures and things like that to the inspector for correction, but it's not, it, they seem to piecemeal the corrections. They're not occurring.
Let me jump in here. Um, director, you're, you're absolutely correct. We have open violations. So instead of, hey, we fixed one and have the inspector go out there and spend a couple hours, Casey has met with the superintendents to say, listen, here are your open violations. You need to create us, give us a timeline and a plan, and when you have it done and ready, we're gonna come out because we're gonna start charging, you know, each and every time we go out there. And the, the violations are violations. Um, it's nothing ma, no major life safety threat, those would be corrected. And the superintendents know that they are on the record as having violations at their school sites.
Okay. Have we ever charged a school for failure?
We charge an inspection fee, sir, and that was something that was like a citation.
On the Saint Mary's, but other schools.
Um, we do have, I think we have some open site, we have open citations, but we never charge more than the first citation because they told us, hey, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna start, we're gonna work with you. We could absolutely give them a deadline that you have fourteen days to comply. Some of it is budgetary stuff that they have to put in their budget, like, um, the drapes and stuff like that, that were expensive items for them to purchase. Um, but I don't know where we are on the fire extinguishers and the, the simple things that they can, staff is on site every day that they can take care of. We can absolutely look at that and come back with a updated report as to what the actual violations are.
So I just, this is, you know, September's fine. It sounds like you're doing, you've got a plan. I like plans. So if there are things that we do that affect their budgets, I don't know what their budget cycle is, maybe it's the same as ours, but if we did the inspections just before they had their budget or far enough so that they could actually put things in their budget and also potentially give them time to do it over the summer when the kids aren't there, depending on what, again, what kinds of things they are. So maybe just a thought, think about whether September is really the right time to go do the inspections or maybe doing it in April or something would be, I'm not saying this year necessarily, just as a concept.
Yeah.
Maybe work with them and see if there's a time that would allow them to put things in their budget and actually do it when the kids aren't there, too.
Yeah, my only concern with that is that, um, the inspections occur for the, the safety of the kids. And when you do it in April, they've gone an entire school year. They start in August, and they've gone the entire school year before we've even begun inspections. So does that make sense?
Well, yeah, unless you've started it soon, you know, unless you did it now.
They're recurring, right? I mean, they're recurring. Sorry, they're recurring. So if you start in April, it comes the next April, and so I would think if there's violations, they would be ready by the time the kids got into school versus they have the inspections when the kids are in school and they don't get it done until the end of the school year.
Yeah, the goal is to kind of do it at the beginning of the school year to, to correct the violations early so that the kids have a safe school year.
Or you could just have more than one a year, but okay, whatever. Yeah. Okay.
I, I have, I want another question. Um, the open cases from previous years?
Yes.
Some of these are over two years old, citation amounts of ten thousand dollars or more. Is there a plan for some, for some of these, especially these higher ones and these ones that have been going on for years?
So there's been some longstanding issues with some of these open cases. A few of the reasons why they're still outstanding is that we're unable to contact the resident or the parcel owner. Um, that's pretty much the biggest reason. Some requested extensions. We've granted extensions because they needed more time. Um, some of the reasons for the weather, it's raining, they can't do the work. Um, some residents, there's a lack of understanding. Um, I've reached out to all twenty-six, my team and I have reached out to all twenty-six open cases to gain a better understanding of why and how we can help, um, get the residents to come into compliance. Um, and some just need assistance. They needed a list of contractors, which we have on our website. So I've worked with my team to maybe, when we leave business cards, leave the contractors' phone numbers, websites, you know, to provide more help.
Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
And I mean, we don't, we don't want to take anyone to court and, and have to put liens and do the work, so I understand that. But, you know, when you see some of these at twenty twenty-two, and we're in twenty twenty-five, and at some point, you gotta say, okay, enough is enough. I mean.
Yeah.
I know each of these cases are different, but.
Yeah.
It, it seems like a long time to me.
We're working on it. And just so you know, in January, there were thirty-six.
Okay.
Good job. There you go.
There you go.
Yep.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Perfect. Great job.
Thank you.
Next, we have the operations report.
Hi, good evening, directors. Tonight, I'll be giving tonight's operations report since of, uh, details and events since the last time we met, uh, beginning with the evacuation drill that we just hosted, uh, with our partners from Aranda PD, uh, last week on Friday, March fourteenth. Um, we co-hosted this evacuation drill geared towards management, uh, staff, uh, with partners from Contra Costa County Fire, uh, Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office, Lafayette PD, uh, East Bay Regional Park District PD, uh, Maraga PD, and Cal Fire. Next slide. And this is a, a modeling of the incident that we prepared under extreme, uh, weather conditions. Uh, what we discussed previously was a particular dangerous situation under red flag conditions with a north, north, uh, north, northwest, uh, uh, wind in North Aranda, um, off of Bear Creek in the North Aranda area. Uh, the slide to your right is the beginning slide, and if you'll note, uh, there's some long distance spotting right there. Um, this is based on a one, three, and five-hour growth model um, that, uh, that challenged staff, um, under simulated event, uh, for evacuations. Next slide. Uh, the slide to your right, that's, uh, Chief King from Maraga PD, and it's my favorite slide because this was our goal. Uh, our goal was to get all agencies, all representatives of management staff under one roof. And Chief King, being the, the senior, tenured lease chief, um, was able to, to explain some knowledge and experience to, to younger staff, uh, myself included. Uh, the, the pictures to your left are inside of the, the building, and then the tailgate exercise where much of this would take place from, from leadership, from all law enforcement and PD. And I will note that evacuations are a law enforcement function. Next slide. And this is the outcome. Uh, so the, uh, the, the zones that you see that are shaded in gray, those are the evacuation zones that are predetermined throughout our communities and county and beyond through the Bay Area um, that, for evacuations based on the simulation, simulated, uh, fire incident that we had. Um, so those were the, the slides. We worked with, uh, the community warning system, um, to produce this under a training. Next slide. Um, in addition, if you remember, uh, in December of twenty twenty-four, um, Engine Forty-three was involved in an incident, uh, involving in, in Oakland, uh, with a vehicle that was, that rear-ended our fire engine. I put this back up. Our fire engine is, uh, is being evaluated currently, um, for the damage that occurred. Uh, I want to inform the board, uh, that there, there was more damage than originally believed, uh, as it, as they got it into the shop and up on the lift. Um, so right now, we are, uh, it is at the shop, and, and they're evaluating the total damage of that vehicle. Next slide. Uh, as we all know and have highly anticipated, uh, the fire hazard severity maps were published, um, that you see there on your left. Uh, the picture on the right is, is Chief Isaacs and our staff delivering, uh, message to KCBS, um, along with other, uh, other media outlets and certainly, um, different community groups. It's kept our staff, uh, Fire Marshal Irving, Chief Isaacs, myself, um, very busy, uh, to, to educate the public of what this means, some of the effects, and to get out the message of, uh, of, of how, how they can anticipate this. So this area that we're standing, um, is an area that we've, we've chosen over the years to rehabilitate, um, and to restore in the North Aranda area. Um, and we use that as the backdrop to tell the story. Next slide. Um, from operations, other happenings in our district. Uh, this, uh, is a Cal Fire helicopter. Uh, what that helicopter is dipping out of is called a helipod. Uh, worked with, uh, Contra Costa County Fire, um, to strategically place, uh, some of these helipods or make available in the event of, uh, of extreme fire, uh, predicted weather events. So these are alternative means, um, funded by Measure H, a county measure, um, of strategic places that we anticipate within our district, uh, that we can put, um, uh, on high, high grounds or open areas where a helicopter can dip out of them. Uh, Contra Costa County right now is, is negotiating a contract with PG&E for the use of a CWN or call when needed, a contract helicopter, in which we would receive the benefits of that. Assuming that they do get the contract and have a helicopter available, uh, we, we will likely have, uh, these helipods available to us at strategic locations. Next slide. Uh, this is a screenshot of, uh, a new software that, that we, uh, put out to staff. This is for incident, uh, fire incident information. Um, it's recording. This is, uh, a, a new software that we hope to improve efficiency and data collection. Um, it's updated. It's, uh, it allows for different, different functions. So every time that we respond to an incident, we're required to complete, uh, complete these, uh, this, this software. And, and that is what we pull, uh, a lot of different information, and it goes up to the national level um, that gets collected and, and, and distributed, um, like you'll see in the board packet here this evening. Next slide. Uh, we've also completed, uh, probationary testing for our firefighter paramedics. Um, I'm happy to announce that they, they completed the probationary phase of testing and will, uh, progress into the final phase, which includes driving operating fire engines. Um, they are on track to, uh, complete their probation as of, uh, July of this year. Next slide. And last, uh, as we heard from our HR manager, um, uh, of an anticipated retirement, um, in the fire service, we do a good job of trying to find the most embarrassing pictures that we can of one another and put them up, uh, for display. Um, so this is the one that I was able to find. It happens to be, uh, of when Engineer Dan Johansson joined our team in May of two thousand and one. Uh, we anticipate Dan's retirement from MOFD at the end of this month, um, after serving our communities for nearly twenty-four years. Um, before joining our team MOFD, at, at MOFD, Dan began his career with Contra Costa County Consolidated Fire, um, which is now Contra Costa County Fire, uh, right out of high school, uh, where he, uh, joined the on-call reserve program. In nineteen ninety-one, Dan began working for regional ambulance, um, as an EMT, and then later went on to paramedic school at UCSF, uh, where he started working as a paramedic in Alameda and Contra Costa County in the private ambulance system. In nineteen ninety-nine, Dan joined, uh, the City of Albany Fire Department as a firefighter, paramedic, uh, just before, um, joining our ranks with the newly formed, uh, Maraga-Aranda Fire District in two thousand and one. Uh, Dan has been a mentor to me and many other younger firefighters through the years. Uh, if it's not about trivia of nineteen eighties music, or, um, he's always willing to share his stories and experience in the EMS system, um, and, uh, and, and including, uh, telling stories about riding, uh, tailboard outside of the engine when he began his career, um, which to many of us is, uh, is, is, uh, would never happen. Um, Dan has always made time to share these experiences as a senior paramedic and educate, uh, the next generation. Uh, please join me with congratulating Engineer Dan Johansson to the next phase of his life in retirement. Uh, pending any questions, this concludes my report.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I, I saw, uh, first of all, kudos on the desktop exercise you did. Um, I saw a lot of coverage of it. Um, City of, uh, Aranda, Maraga had some. I think I saw it online as well. Um, and I, I think it's great that we do that. Um, I would like, in the future, maybe if you do those, to notify the board, and if it's appropriate, personally, I would like to go and observe. I, I haven't been, I haven't seen one here. I've seen one in another jurisdiction I work, uh, but I would like to go and, and see it in action myself.
Understood.
So were there any learnings that we had out of it? In other words, important takeaways? I remember the last time we had one that we actually, not a test like this, when we actually came down minor road and, you know, did all, they figured out that the stoplights at the end of the road weren't controllable, which I think they still aren't, by the way. Um, so that we can't turn them to blink yellow or blink red or do any of that kind of stuff. And somebody's still out of work on that. But were there any takeaways from this drill?
Yeah, so I wanna, I wanna emphasize, so evacuations are a function of law enforcement. So that's why we, we co-shared, uh, co-hosted this event, um, with Aranda PD. Every training, we learned something. Um, we've taken part in two recent trainings, this one being, uh, with management staff. Um, the focus on this one, and I, and a learning point was certainly relationships. The importance of putting a face to a name and being able to know who to call when. And that includes, uh, the function of CWS, which is the Community Warning System. Uh, CWS had employees there physically in the building and, 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 and providing that information that they need when they notify the communities. Um, I would say that's the largest learning point for all staff in, in being able to articulate that, um, that, that time when a battalion chief, likely a battalion chief from, from our district, and the law enforcement supervisor meet to determine the areas that will likely need to be evacuated based on the growth of the fire, the, the conditions that are presented. So that, that, that time between the law enforcement supervisor and our MOFD leadership is crucial, and then how it's translated in, in, uh, to CWS.
Just one more quick question. So, uh, last time I heard anything about this kind of stuff, they, you know, they So, uh, last time I heard anything about this kind of stuff, they, you know, there were these, these zones and, you know, when the fire is coming a certain way, you, you tell, you know, you evacuate things. Is there a step before evacuation, just a notification so that people can say, hey, I don't really care if I'm being evacuated, I'm leaving anyway? Do, do we actually, i- is that, is there a preliminary step? Or is it just a one, you're either evacuated or not?
Yes, great question. Thank you for asking. So two different, two different versions. So it's an evacuation or an evacuation warning. The warning, um, would be typically seen in the areas surrounding the evacuation. So on the peripherals of the evacuation areas. And it would be to say that it is, a warning would be to say, hey, you need to make sure your bags are packed and we are recommending that you leave now. An evacuation, um, as opposed to you need to get your things and leave now. So yeah, two different, two different things, two different cadences. But it's to, to preference the areas that will, it will likely be going.
Cause, you know, people, there, there are two, two reactions that I can think after that. One is people wait till the last minute and they wanna see if it's really gonna be a problem. Or they ignore everything and everybody just leaves all at once. And having been through a fire at the 40th floor of a Manhattan high-rise building, the first two floors were on fire, personally, it's a bummer. And they say, oh, well, we, we're gonna evacuate by floor. And everybody says, heck no, we're not. So they all go on the stairways at the same time. So I'm just saying that there are dynamic, you know, there are sort of emotional dynamics that go along with that that we need to be sure we're taking into account when we do all these things. So that all sounds great on paper, but it would be interesting to see what really happens.
Yeah, certainly, yeah. And, and, and that's one of the points for, for law enforcement, certainly to, to talk out and to, to, to make notice of, to, to make sure that they have areas that can support those logistically, um, and, and flow, contra-flow, traffic control points, if and when that's, that's needed. That was some, a big point of discussion on their end.
Just, just changing topics. On the fire engine that is out, it's out of service, right? The one that was damaged in December? Is there an S, any estimate? Are we insured?
No, uh, I just, uh, latest information was as of this morning. Certainly insured by us. And it, it's preliminary, um, but it went to the shop, uh, our, our regular equipment shop. They evaluated it and said, hey, this needs, this needs further evaluation by a shop that is, that is equipped to do that. And, and so it's a third party.
So it's a different shop than where?
It's a subcontractor, yes, sir. And so, yeah, they, they had it on the lift. There's, there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of parts. So we, we, we hope to hear back, uh, this week as soon as possible. But right now we're looking at other alternatives, um, that if, if and when there is, if, assuming there's a, a total loss or, or, you know, something else to make sure that we have in place, to make sure that we, we have a continuity of operations.
When you say we're insured, meaning we have an insurance company that's gonna pay for this? Or are we self-insured?
It's, so it's our, our vehicle insurance is through the fire agency's insurance risk authority, which is the joint powers authority. And so they will pay once we get an estimate. That's what they're waiting for, an estimate of what the cost is gonna be. Um, and then they pay it less or deductible.
And was it, was there an investigation done as, at fault on this accident? I mean, is it determined that?
CHP has produced a, a report, yes.
That the vehicle that struck our fire engine was at fault?
Yeah, based on, based on the situation and the high likelihood of litigation, I prefer to leave it there, but there, there has been a CHP, uh, report that has been.
Okay.
Directors, if I may jump in here. One of the concerns Chief Lambert and I have is we're dealing with the shop is if for some reason they said, hey, this needs to be totaled and we're five years out. If we said, oh, tomorrow we need to order a fire engine, it, it's four to five years. So we're looking at other alternatives cause our reserve engine that is now in service, uh, in place of that is one that takes a lot of maintenance and goes out of service quite frequently. And the option of staffing a station with a type three engine in place of a type one, you know, is of concern and some liability. So we're, we're watching it and hope to have more information next month with specifics. You know, is it totaled? Is it not totaled? And what are we looking at a cost and, and timeframe to get it back in service? And what can we do in the meantime? We have some of our, uh, partner agencies that have, they've purchased new engines that are gonna be going into service. So they have some good quality stuff that is gonna go to their reserve engine or they may be looking to get rid of. So we do have a few options out there that we're looking at, but nothing set in stone until we hear from the shop.
One, one last one. What's the status of getting our own vehicle? That's a, that's a, whatever you wanna call it, you know, an old Caltrans truck with the big yellow things in the back with full of sand or whatever to be our blocking truck instead of using a million dollar fire engine?
Yeah, so we've, we've looked at it, uh, what are? Good.
So that's one of the things we're still looking at is what was the cost of, that Confire had to take one of their reserve engines? And they designed that system that would go down, um, and would have that cushion there? Or is it cheaper to purchase one, an old Caltrans vehicle that has that same type of cushion with sand or water in it to absorb that impact? We have Chief Benzley looking at that, um, as we bring forward the new budget. Is it cost effective to do that? And I think Director Jorgens, to your point, is probably better than having a, you know, 1.5 million dollar fire engine absorbing those hits. And we get hit, I hate to say it, but, you know, frequent enough on the roadway where we need to consider that. So again, just looking at cost.
It isn't just the cost, it's the, gee, we don't have one, you know?
Yeah. And the safety of our employees that are out there.
In addition, um, one of the, the, I'm, I'm confident that the, the best way to control, um, and prevent traffic, uh, on, on an incident for on the, regarding the freeway or roadways is to control the volume of traffic. So working with partners of Caltrans, CHP and, and how we position best practices, um, across our nation, being involved in communicating with, uh, traffic control boards and utilizing things like road, rolling roadblocks and stopping traffic is, in my opinion, the best thing. If you can, if you can stop traffic before the incident and then control the flow, in my opinion, is, is the most effective means in controlling the scene. I will note that even with that, there are times, and I've experienced them, where, where people have driven through road stops with CHP there in the middle of the night. And, uh, and, and it caught all of us by surprise. So that is something that in terms of training and education for our staff, we always maintain this high situational awareness on the roadways at all times. But to, to your point, I, I do, I am confident that controlling the flow and volume of traffic is, is the safest way for us to, to control our roadways.
Having one lane blocked and people going 60 miles an hour, 15 feet away from you is scary.
Certainly, yeah. So utilizing, uh, options, uh, like rolling roadblocks and then stops, in my opinion, is the best way.
Yep, makes sense.
Thank you.
We have our upcoming calendar and events, and I just wanted to, um, make note on of our annual spring open house at Station 45 will be held on May 3rd.
Cool. Do you, do you know what the hours are?
It's late. It's not, um, it's like.
The hours are 11 to 1.
Yeah.
11, okay.
It's later than often.
Yeah.
Yes. It's not the pancake one.
Right, got it.
Next up, we'd, we are opening public comment for the announcement items. And we do not have any hands raised or any, uh, in-person public comment. We're now opening public comment for items that are not on the agenda. We did receive one written public comment, which was forwarded to the board. It was from Joel Leibov, which was included in our packet. Also was included was, um, Fire Chief Isaac's response. And that comment's on our website as well. We do not have any hands raised or any in-person public comment. Next, we're on to our consent agenda. Before we, uh, go to the consent, we will open public comment for the consent agenda items. And we do not have.
So you said public comment.
Public comment, yes. So we do not have any hands raised and we do not have any in-person public comment.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, consent, uh, items, what, 8.1 through 8.8.
So I, I'd actually like to pull Elvis Tep just for, cause I have two little questions on them. 8.6 and 8.8.
Okay.
Otherwise.
Oh, the motion will be, accept them all, except 8.6 and 8.8.
I'll second that.
Director Dan Ziger?
Hi.
Director Jex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens?
Hi.
Director Romer?
Hi.
President Hassler?
Hi.
Item 8.6?
Okay, so on this one, the timeline, uh, the only, the workshop and the, and the long range financial plan are happening at the next board meeting, you believe, the 16th of April?
Correct.
So I happen to not be able to be here and I'm pretty interested in dealing with that somehow. So can we have an extra? Often we, we used to have two meetings, you know, the, the board meeting and a separate budget meeting. And I guess we're, I've got down to one now. So, I mean, I realize I'm only one board member, but, um, I would like somehow an opportunity to participate and then I'm sorry I'm gonna be gone next time.
So we're happy to have a special meeting for that. Is there, if that's the direction of the board?
Well, it's up to everybody else too. I'm not, you know.
What's the timeframe when you would be available, sir?
Actually, uh, any time right before that would be fine if we wanted to keep it in the same sort of zip code, if we could do it. I think I'm leaving on the 15th. But, um, on that Tuesday. So anytime before that would be fine or anytime after like the end of the 27th or whatever that, 28th, whatever that Monday is, it, it's later in the month. I'm sorry, my daughter's getting married and it's one of the.
You have to be there for that one, sir. We, we understand. And if, if that is the board's, uh, direction and wish, I would just recommend we do it at the, when you come back, that way staff has enough time to make sure we've prepared everything correctly.
Those are just requests, so.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
I'm fine.
So it would be, you think we'd have a special meeting just for the, just for that item? Is that what you were saying?
Sometimes we have, we, in the past had committee meetings, where you don't like a budget committee meeting, but I don't think we have those anymore. Uh, I don't think we have a budget committee anymore, as a matter of fact. So.
A workshop.
A workshop, yeah. I would call it a workshop. And it doesn't necessarily mean that everybody has to come for that matter, but I just would.
We also have some closed session items. We might be able to move over to that, lighten up the meeting a little bit, the earlier meeting. So potentially, so we could do a few other things at that meeting if you want, if that's sports player.
I think the problem's the date.
Anytime before the, well, if you want to do it after, anytime after whatever the Monday is, that's after the 27th. So I don't know what that date is, but anytime after that for a month, I'm happy. Well, there's another board meeting in there someplace, but.
So the Monday after the 27th is the Monday, the 28th?
Okay. So again, I'm incredibly flexible after that.
If, if we did that, I would, I would also probably not wanna do it at our regular time. Maybe we can do it in a different, maybe you can just poll everybody and.
Yes, sir.
With some options?
Yeah.
We can poll with, uh, date or options for dates and, and time.
Great. And again, I don't care what time of day it is, um, you know, thank you for being understanding.
And just for clarification, this was the workshop for the budget?
Long range financial.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is related to the budget, you know?
Oh, so, okay, so I just wanna make sure. Okay, so there's two, if you look at the timeline, there's the long range financial forecast public workshop. So that, that, my understanding is the board is saying, let's do that. We're gonna do that at a special meeting after April 27th. And then there's also scheduled for April 16, a public budget workshop, which is regarding the development of the next operating budget. So is that getting moved to after April 27th?
I'm happy to have you do that then. I just, it's more the long range one I was concerned about.
Oh, I, I think, I, I think it makes, if we're gonna do that, I think it makes sense to do them both. I mean.
I agree, together.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Just make it a, a public workshop.
For both.
On, um.
Great.
Yeah. And I'm okay with that.
Does that work with your timelines and everything? I mean, I hate to delay stuff.
Yes, that'll work. Thank you.
All right.
We need a motion.
Sorry, and the other one is.
8.8?
Yeah. So you asked for, we, we, we got the report for the East Bay Hills thing and it was, it said it was ended. So what were we gonna do with this money? But I, I'm not sure it explained what the purpose of the money was or what we were spending it on.
Right, so the money is needed for the fuel break. And what's happening is that the budget was not big enough to cover all the expenses for fiscal year 2025. So that's why the budget needs to be increased to reflect the additional revenue that the district will receive and the additional expenditures that were, have been spent on the fuel break.
So it's, it's effectively an accounting requirement, it's a need to, easy, okay.
Net zero.
It just didn't explain that, so that's okay.
In other words, it's net zero. There's no additional net expense to the district.
Correct, it's all covered under the grant.
Great, easy. So now, okay, I'll move that we, uh, we approve, what is it, 8.6?
I second the motion.
And, uh, yeah, I'll move that we approve 8.6 and 8.8.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Director Dan Ziger?
Excuse me, what, don't we have to open it to the public?
We already did.
We did open all the items.
The whole thing, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, aye.
Director Jex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens?
Hi.
Director Romer?
Hi.
President Hassler?
Hi.
Item nine. Approved Resolution 2502 authorizing a first amendment to the Personal Services Agreement with Shaw Kawasaki for Architectural Design Services for Fire Station 45, as well as approving the contract and consider providing direction to staff regarding Station 45 remodel.
Directors, on December 18th, 2024, the board approved a, a personal services agreement between Maraga Arinda Fire District, uh, and Shaw Kawasaki for architectural design services related to remodeling Station 45. Station 45 currently houses three-person crew, a battalion chief, deputy fire chief, as well as office and storage space used by several MOFD programs. The remodeling project, uh, initially envisioned a renovation of 2,800 square feet of the first floor of an 8,100 square foot building. Following discussions with the Ad hoc Committee and Architect, the proposed amendment in Attachment B will include a remodel of the kitchen and dayroom. The additional work is intended to improve the usability of space by staff and increase the usability of life of Station 45. Shaw Kawasaki's compensation for the additional work is $65,960, which includes schematic design, preparation of construction documents and building and construction administration. The amendment also includes an extension of three months, uh, contingency to complete the services. The extension of time is needed to allow for the extra services in the amendment to be completed and to account for the time spent on the project discussing with the Ad hoc Committees. Last, the amendment includes an increase from $29,000 to $50,000 and the amount of extra work can be approved by the fire chief. Uh, this increase is proposed in order to increase the flexibility to re, uh, flexibility to request additional work, uh, as the Ad hoc Committee and staff and the architect continue to meet and refine the modifications of Station 45. Uh, staff recommends, uh, discuss, deliberate, approve Resolution 2502, a resolution, resolution of the Maraga Arinda Fire District authorizing a first amendment to the, uh, Personal Services Agreement between MOFD and Shaw Kawasaki. And I'm available for any questions that may have.
So I, you know, I know I was in the meeting the other day and I've been thinking more about it. And I also looked at the long range financial plan. And we heard that, you know, the, the remodel of the kitchen or kitchen and room or whatever they call it, is gonna be, you know, a half million dollars. And then we have to add 30 to 50% of that because of overhead and planning and design and permits, other fun things that, you know, that we have to do. And so that makes it, you know, a $600,000 or $700,000 remodel for a kitchen. And I'm. And I'm happy, I, I think, I think it needs it. It looks not great right now. And, you know, I think it, it's something that needs to be done. It's not. You know, when you, when you add that to the other costs that we're having and if we want to try to do, and first off, it delays the project, which is. Probably not great, given that we're trying to use it for, um, you know, increase our ambulance coverage and things. I mean, get our paramedics. Uh, or one, you know, single role paramedics going, but it also impacts what we can potentially have money to do. At first Station forty one, when we need to start working on that. Um, so I personally would, I think that sounds like a lot of money to remodel something that you're not even going to change the walls for or anything else. I mean, it's going to be. You know. It, it's, I don't want to say cosmetic, but it's kind of cosmetic. And I think we could, there must be an alternative way to do it for less money. Somehow go buy, have a commercial kitchen designer, put in stainless steel cabinets for you if they're supposed to be super strong or something. There must be a different way to do it. So I'm okay with changing the chief's, um, you know, authority, that part of it, but I think we need to make this a separate project. Think about how to redo their, uh, their kitchen personally. Cause I think, and, and we can do it soon, but I, I, I just am not sure that we need to tie the two projects together like that.
Yes, uh, in response, the, uh, so if we were to, if we were to do it separately.
Uh.
One thing to, to mention is that we are still required, uh, under district purchasing policy. Um, that we would be required to maintain as the, an RFP for the work. Uh, assuming the work is to be completed, uh, the same would apply. So in the sense, we would still be obligated to pay. Prevailing wages. Uh, we would still be subject to the permitting process. And, and the selection of the contractor that completes the work.
Right.
So i- in, in, in either sense, the, in terms of the costs, the costs will still apply. The purchasing. Uh, policy will still apply. Um, in, in this sense, it would be to. Include this into a, a construction project that has, is already been approved to, to proceed. With an architect that we've already selected and to include this, assuming that we proceed with a project manager and construction. Company that, that is chosen through the selection process.
But, but I think the things we're doing on the rest of the building are, are major surgery. We're changing out walls. We're putting in windows. We're. Worrying about asbestos. We're worried about all kinds of things. It's a, it's a major construction project. And remodeling a kitchen is not, in my opinion, a major construction project. It doesn't have to be at least. And I think you could go find a kitchen, a, a whole series of kitchen contractors that would come and design it for you for a lot less than sixty five thousand dollars. Um, cause I've had a lot of them designed in my life, um, and they just don't charge that much. And, and I think we could end up. Go hire a commercial kitchen person to do it, um, who does it for a living, you know, just kitchens, because they do that. So I, I, I'm just not convinced we've thought through it enough to spend six hundred or seven hundred thousand dollars on a kitchen right now.
This is Director Romer. I, I, I share Director, uh, Jorgens concerned about the cost. Uh, you know, it, it's possible that we might have to bite the bullet and, and do this at some point, but I'm. I'm not convinced that we've looked at the alternatives carefully enough. And I really do think we have an obligation to look at something that's. That's more cost effective. At, at this point though, um, the way I see it, we're just increasing the. Contract with Shaw Kawasaki for the schematic design and the construction documents. Um, we're not doing the work yet. We don't know that it's how much you said it's going to be. Um, and. I, I think that a kitchen at a firehouse is not a kitchen. You know, in, in, in a, in a regular residential house. I mean, I, I've tour, I toured that kitchen. And the, the cabinetry in there, um, is in, is in, is, is shabby. Um, this is a, 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 basically an industrial kitchen that gets used. Um, you know, every day, hard. I mean, these are firefighters working in a kitchen like that. I. I don't think what they're working in right now is appropriate for, um, for our, our, our. Our department, our, our district. Um, I really think it needs to be improved. And at this point, we don't, I don't think, I mean, I don't think we're looking at, you know, the highest end. Uh, equipment in there, uh, cabinetry and things like that, but I, I really think it's a need. Um, of, of, of remodeling and it, it seems to me an appropriate time to do it while we're doing the rest of the firehouse. Why the, I think the, the cost will just increase if we, if we don't do it now. Uh, we'll already have, uh, we'll have portables, probably have a, a temporary kitchen of some kind and. It, it seems to me to make sense if we're going to do it to do it now. And I think we still will have opportunities to. Talk about the cost of, of any appliances, cabinetry, um, the countertops. Um, you know, if you go tour that kitchen and I would, I would re- recommend that any director who wants to just. Talk to Chief Lucas, uh, Lucas, uh, Chief Lambert here and he'll be happy to show you, but. I think you'd be surprised of what, what they're dealing with there. I mean, doors that don't close, drawers that don't close. Uh, it, it's in, I, I think it's in poor condition. Um, and so I, I, I really feel that it's, it's something that's needed. And to just start the work right now to, um, to increase the contract to include it, it, it is something I would approve.
So just to. A couple rebuttal of that. I, I agree, it needs to be done. So it's not that it doesn't, I, I think it needs to be done, which I said from the beginning, but I, I just. I'm not sure we've thought about all of the, you know, I, I don't know what engineering necessarily needs to be done unless we think the ventilation isn't good enough or something. If, I don't know what, I don't think if you don't change those things, you, I don't see why you have to get a permit to put new. New anything in to, uh, to go change your cabinets and put new appliances in. I'm, you know, I, I don't think that requires a permit. So, um. Maybe it does. I, I'm not an expert in this, but I think you could put in a commercial kitchen. A full stainless steel, last for fifty years, commercial kitchen for under five hundred thousand dollars. Cause I think restaurants do it every day. And there is used stuff that's available at fifty different places around the Bay Area.
Except I think, I think Mr. Kawasaki who's here explained to us at the ad hoc that. For a firehouse, there's different standards. I mean, we can't just, you know, I mean, you can't just go down to. You know, your Home Depot and buy.
I didn't say that. I said, "commercial kitchen." That means industrial approved for, for commercial cooking. You know, so I guarantee that if you put in all stainless steel, it will meet whatever code is necessary to meet for a kitchen in a firehouse. And it'll last as long as any cabinet you can buy any place that's made of something other than stainless steel.
Director Romer, I'm happy to accept a tour of the kitchen. I've been in there multiple times. I guess I haven't paid that much of a close attention to it, but I would be happy to take a, 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 a close look at it. But I do want to look at.
We didn't talk about delaying the project three months in the meeting either, and I think that's absolutely not our objective. I mean. Chief Windaker, when he left, said this is the number one thing we needed to do and we needed to do it quickly. So. Anyway, so that's my vote.
Um, Mr. Kawasaki is, is here, as you know, and also is. Uh, district resident as well, and I'm wondering if maybe you want to.
Well, it's nothing against him. He's, he's great. I, I just.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but, but I, I'm thinking maybe on this issue of the three month delay in particular, that Mr. Kawasaki could comment. I. I, I have a feeling that this is something that's needed, actually. I don't think it's an intentional delay.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, Director, let me, let me address the delay part first. Um, when we received word at the end of January to, uh, go on hold and now we went through February.
Okay, so it's, it's.
So that part.
We're already having, okay.
We have not worked on it since January thirty first, the project. We put it on hold. And we are now in mid-March, so that's, that's a month and a half.
Okay.
Um, I also need to get, if we go through with this. What I have to do is to get the design of the kitchen to the point where the dormitories are. We don't want to call our engineers in twice. We want to get our, we call it our base sheets. Now, that we give to them and then release them from engineering. One trip, I don't want to have, to make two trips. So, uh, we have to catch up to where we were and that's, that's a month. So now we're two and a half months. Yeah, maybe we can save two weeks. I, I don't know. But we are also adding a little bit of scope across the entire project, right? There's a kitchen now, so there's twenty, twenty-five percent more stuff. That affects not just the design catch-up, but all the other things that we do, construction documents. Construction observation, all those other steps. So I, I'm quite sure that the, if we do the math, that that'll add up. Um, I think the other earlier point about, um, you know, the quality of what we do. So I would suggest or urge the board, think about what is it that you want to do with this fire station? When I, when we say, um, that it is, you know, and I think we've thrown some numbers out before. You know, brand new station, sixteen hundred dollars square foot, rule of thumb, eight hundred dollars a square foot. For a rehab of existing facilities. What we're talking about in that eight hundred is to bring those areas. To the level of standard of brand new fire stations in the interiors, let's say. The question I, I would ask ourselves, what is the expectation for this fire station? If the expectation of this fire station is to last ten years, maybe, maybe fifteen. Then yes, go out to a, a kitchen design firm and get the quality that you would get in a normal household. We do not as fire station architect.
I didn't say that, don't forget. I said, "commercial."
We are doing it. We are doing, this is a commercial kitchen.
It's a quasi-commercial kitchen. You talked about Masonite and things and, you know, it, that's not commercial, commercial stainless steel.
The tops are stainless steel normally.
Yeah, but you can.
I mean, we, we could argue it, but I would invite you guys to see a, a fire station we do for San Francisco. You know, all stainless steel, or at least the tops. It's hidden in terms of the quality. And I think I explained to the ad hoc committee, we do not use standard Masonite cores. We use something, it's called classic core. It's plywood laminates with a particle board outs- outside facing. We do not use standard edge banding. We use a heavy duty edge banding. So what I'm saying is. The, the level that we do, that our details are, are equivalent to commercial kitchen. And that is what NFPA says. When we do a fire station, we don't do it to normal residential quality. We want it to feel like a residence in that, you know, things look like it would or, but we don't use products. That you would normally use in regular kitchen. Now, I, I don't have the details. Of a regular house in my office. I only have the details we use for fire stations. So you're probably correct, like if you go to a regular kitchen design, or maybe it's a, maybe you go to a commercial. Um, and by the way, we do commercial kitchens too. We do all stainless steel kitchens for chefs, commercial kitchens. And, and I feel that, yeah, this is probably that level. I mean, that's the quality level, but it's not done all stainless steel. For instance, even in the stainless steel tops, I was trying to, trying to explain, we do not have separate sinks that are dropped on. A granite top. What we do and prefer to do is mold the stainless steel and becomes the sink. Right? It's all integrated, becomes the backsplash. There are no seams because seams harbor infectious disease. So the whole movement now is we don't have anything in a fire station, floors, any place in which. Any kind of bacteria can reside, right? It's like a, it's like a hospital in a way, but we don't want it to look like hospital. We don't want it to be actually made all out of stainless steel. I'm just trying to convey that it, it is a higher quality. And I do understand, like, maybe, um, you, you've done custom homes, et cetera. The, the other, the other aspect of this is that we, there are pro- project labor agreements. When you, when you hire your contractor, you are not hiring a contractor, uh, subject to normal constraints. It's a higher level of standard. They have to pay higher wages and all. Everything goes up. You have to have a construction manager. So it's hard to bypass doing a fire station to do it at a different level. But so it's just a, a warning, but you, you can do that. I mean, if you decide to go to do that. I, I do agree that if you're going to do it, you have to think about how long is this station going to last? Right? It wouldn't make sense to, to do something and then fifteen years from now to tear it down, one new building. I think you have to think about this station in relationship to your other program, including Station forty one. So if you say, "we're going to do forty one, we're going to keep forty five for more than a few years." And we need to build it to that level. That quality level is going to last us, right? So that, that, that would be my, uh, my argument. It, it, it doesn't matter to me whether, whether you include the kitchen or not. We're, we're very happy to do it either way, but that would be the argument for doing it all correctly right now, to, would be to last. Uh, any thoughts or questions?
I, I just think part of it is, you know, we, we heard it, I think it was the last meeting that, that firefighters all believe that forty one is the priority we should have, not forty five. And that, um. In do, if that is true and we want to do that soon, we do have financial constraints on these things too, and an extra seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Very valid.
Um, so, you know, it, it's not, it, it's not just for the.
Yes.
I'm happy with the concept. It's just that it, it's, there are trade-offs people have to make, you know, so.
Yeah.
And it does sound like it'll at least add a month and a half to the process. Something like that, a month maybe, but which is not huge, but.
So is there a motion? Well, I would, I, I would make a motion that we, uh. Uh, to approve the, uh, the amendment, uh, as, as stated here. Uh, for attach, in attachment A and B, and, and are we asking for C as well? For the skip, for the single loaded corridor or not? We're asking for a, a resolution approving the amendment, first amendment to agreement. And, and C, the, we don't have to approve that, right? The, the corridor.
We already approved it, didn't we?
Yeah, I, so I. Yeah, the, the amendment is attachment B, Lucas is saying. Is that, Jim, are you on, you?
I, I am. Uh, good evening. Yes, right now we're asking you to, if you're going to make an emotion to approve, it'd be. Approve the resolution, um, authorizing the first amendment. And then approve the first amendment and then, um, consider giving. Direction to staff, which I think you already done.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the resolution twenty five dash zero two. And to approv- approve the first amendment to the personnel services agreement. As stated.
And do we have a second?
Perhaps a substitute motion?
Is it, does, do?
Motion fails because.
If they.
For lack of a second.
And we decided it failed. So I would propose that, again, I, we approve the part of it. Which piece it is, that approves the chief's ability to have greater flexibility and how much, how much the changes he can approve. Um, and we certainly tell Mr. Kawasaki to proceed post haste in doing the original, the, the. Living quarters part of it, well, all the other stuff that, except for the kitchen. Um, that. I don't know exactly which pieces of it is, that is, but that would be the general idea. And we, and I would say that we should further, you know, think about if there are alternatives, because, you know, to, to doing the kitchen, um, separately. But in parallel is fine.
This is Director Romer to Director Jorgens', uh, restated motion. I will second.
And if I could clarify, is that including any additional time because of the delays that have occurred?
Sure. Yep, obviously, it'd be, you know, for sure.
Is that three months or two?
What, I mean. Go ahead, what do you?
So one and a half months in a whole.
Okay, so add two months to it, you know, whatever, because I know it's going to take some time to get started again, probably. Yeah, okay.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
And just for clarification for me, can we just restate the whole motion?
Okay, but maybe, or maybe Jim could reframe it.
That would be great.
In the words of, you know, what it is they're approving versus not approving. Would that help?
Thank you.
So if my, uh, my understanding of the motion is correct, you're moving to approve Resolution Twenty-Five-O-Two, which, uh, authorizes the First Amendment to the Personal Services Agreement. You're approving the First Amendment to the Personal Services Agreement with modifications, uh, an extension of time of two months, and allowing the fire chief to have up to fifty thousand dollars of authority for additional work.
And just to be clear.
That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem to me to be, uh, stating what Director Jorgens.
Well, I, I think it's minus the kitchen is sort of, I'm just trying to figure out how to say that.
Exactly, that's the whole point.
Yeah, and, and deleting the kitchen.
Okay, there you go. Yes.
Until we've made further determination as to whether there are alternatives, and what those alternatives are, and what cost-effectiveness of those alternatives.
That are friendly.
Is that where? Do that without having an, an architect look at it all, but okay, if that's what you want to do.
I'm just not sure I understand why you have to have, if, or you have to have an architect look at it and send sixty-five thousand dollars, and have the engineers look at it, when all you're going to do is replace the appliances that are already there, if they need it, and put in new cabinets?
All right, on, on, Marsha, do you feel like you have the motion? Okay, great. So on that motion, I think you're ready to vote.
Director Danziger?
No.
Director Jax?
Stain.
Director Jorgens?
No, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Director Romer?
Yes.
President Hassler?
Yes.
Marsha Pass. We will now open for public comment. And we do not have any hands raised, and we do not have any in-person public comment. And we've had our vote. I'll proceed to the next item. Item nine point two. Update on the local responsibility area fire hazard severity zone maps.
Uh, good evening, directors. On February seventh, twenty twenty-five, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N dash eighteen dash twenty-five. This order directed the Office of the State Fire Marshal to release the updated fire hazard severity zone maps for local responsibility areas. The order also, um, required the Board of Forestry to start working on their Zone Zero regulations. So the maps for Contra Costa County were LRA fire hazard severity zone maps were released Monday, February twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The updated map designates the following parcel classifications. So within our district, we now have six thousand three hundred and two parcels and very high, three thousand thirty-four and high, and moderate, uh, twenty-eight, seventy-eight. Pursuant to Government Code Fifty-One, One Seventy-Eight, Fifty-One, One Seventy-Nine, the district is required to, within thirty days of receiving the maps, we have to post the maps and make them available for public review and comment. Uh, staff has done that. We've posted the maps to our website, and in the board packet are the comments that we have received so far. Public access to the maps is on our admin building located twelve eighty Moraga Way. As I noted before, also on the, um, website, and there's a link in the, uh, agenda or the staff report for the public comment. We're also working with Contra Costa County to place a notice, um, at the Office of the County Recorder, County Assessor, and County Planning Agency as required by the Government Code section. The next steps, uh, for the board, within a hundred and twenty days of receiving those maps, we have to adopt the maps by ordinance. As we've said over the past few years, as we've waited for the rollout of these maps, we are unable to make any changes that would decrease the fire hazards severity zone. We could not say, "Hey, the state said this is very high. We think it should be high," and make those changes. The only changes that we can make are increasing, uh, zones. So if we looked at the map and said, "Well, this is an area of high. We believe it should go to very high." With the finding of fact, we could, um, do that. A couple of things to note that these new maps will do is back in twenty twenty, we created the Wildland Urban Interface Fire Area, or what we designated as a WUI FA. We did that for the specific reason of triggering the more restrictive, uh, building codes that were found in the California Building Code, Chapter Seven A, Residential Code, uh, Chapter Three Three Seven, and the Fire Code, Chapter Forty-nine. So one thing that's going to happen with this new, uh, Fire Code update cycle that will take, uh, place January first of twenty-six, is all those sections of the Fire Code, the Building Code, and the Residential Code are being pulled out of those codebooks, and the State Building Commission has created a Part Seven. It's a California Wildland Urban Interface, uh, code that all those previous codes from the building residential will now reside in that WUI code. So we will have a new code that we have to enforce is the Fire District. But the new maps, as I said, also take out the WUI FA designation that we had. So staff's looking for a direction on where do we think the WUI FA should be? Since the maps have completely changed, there's areas that were previously, right now, today, that are covered under the WUI FA designation that will go away uh, upon the second reading or the adoption of, um, our new ordinance adopting the new maps. I think, my opinion is, where, where the more restrictive building, uh, requirements are today, they, they need to stay there today. There was a reason we put it into effect in twenty twenty, and there's a reason they should be there today. Um, we can do that in multiple ways. We could create another WUI FA. We are also listed as a community at risk, and per Health and Safety Code, communities at risk are considered wildland urban interface areas. Now, the communities at risk designation had a little bit of controversy when we went back through that in, in twenty twenty, but it is statutory law. It's in the Health and Safety Code. So that would be an easy designation to say the district is designated by the state of California as a wildland urban interface area. As we adopt the new fire hazard severity zone maps, we're going to identify the whole district as having to comply with the more restrictive building standards. That is completely separate from the defensible space standards or the Zone Zero regulations that will be coming out. The Board of Forestry, um, held a meeting where they discussed their new Zone Zero regulations. Those Zone Zero regulations, they did not release. We did not get to see what the specifics were. What they told us was, this is how we got here. Here's the studies that we did. The several items they did discuss, uh, irrigated green grass looks like it's going to be allowed within the five-foot non-combustible zone. Single specimen trees looks like it's going to be allowed in the five-foot non-combustible zone. So that would mean oak trees or a maple tree or anything else that people have, as long as it's maintained. There's no combustible ground cover. It's not, um, overhanging the roof or anything like that. Those trees look like they will, uh, remain. And the other one, the wooden fences that run parallel to the house within the five-foot zone, look like they will stay. It's the portion that runs perpendicular to the house or touches the house that would have to be, um, removed or changed to a non-combustible area. The board's, uh, direction where they anticipate going through their adoption process, so the Zone Zero would take effect January first of twenty twenty-six for new construction. The state, uh, legislator changed, uh, the law from original Zone Zero regulations that would, uh, require existing structures to comply with in a year. That has now been pushed to three-year. My recommendation to the board would be that we bring back, when we decide where we want Zone Zero, if we want it outside the very high fire hazard severity zone, that we direct our residents what needs to take place every year. One thing we found with our juniper, when we said, "Hey, we're going to tell you that you have to remove juniper within ten feet of your driveway or fire apparatus access road," and then we gave people three years to comply, very few, if anybody complied, within that three years. And then we struggled, um, once that became enforceable. So my recommendation would be, when we decide that Zone Zero, we say, "Year one, we want," and I'm just, you know, uh, throwing out ideas. Year one, no combustible ground cover, any juniper within five feet, any rosemary or highly combustible, flammable, uh, vegetation types within that, uh, five-foot zone go out. Year two, you have to do these additional items. Year three, you have to do this. So by the end of year three, all the existing construction, um, would be compliant with Zone Zero. The other question that we need to get answers or some direction, ideas on, is where do we want the Zone Zero with the new maps? Currently, it is going to be in the very high fire hazard severity zones. I haven't seen anything, uh, from the state legislator, uh, any pending legi, legislation to change that. Um, if we're requiring the building standards district-wide, I think we at least need to talk and consider the Zone Zero district-wide. Those two go hand in hand, and they enhance the defensible, defensible space and the survivability of our structures. So, um, just some things to consider in the staff report or the new maps, as well as the, the comments. I was surprised by the amount of change that we saw. I anticipated most of Arinda north of twenty-four being, uh, very high fire hazard severity zone. There were areas that were designated in two thousand nine as very high that came out of the very high. A small percentage, but it did happen, where a large portion of Arinda, um, became very high. We have a lot of areas, um, moving down Moraga Way towards Moraga on the west side, what I would call the west side of the highway, that are now, um, very high fire hazard severity zone. Moraga saw a pretty significant change. Um, a lot of areas in Moraga became, uh, a very high fire hazard severity zone. So Chief Lambert and I are working with Casey, our fire marshal, how we're going to notice those, uh, citizens that saw that change. Because I'm sure there's a vast majority of them that aren't aware of going from no zone to a very high, and that very high is going to require them to have a Zone Zero. So we're going to have to figure out how to, um, educate, educate, and educate, and really get that information out to the citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have on the fire hazard severity zones.
I have a question, comment, whatever. Dr. Rep, oh, okay. So let me see if I understand. So we need to adopt the, the fire maps, the new fire maps, because we only had thirty days to do that, right?
A hundred and twenty days, sir. So this is just briefing the board on it. We will come back in April for the first reading of the new ordinance, adopting the maps. What I'm hoping to get tonight is, do we want to create a new, new WUI fire area for the more restrictive building? Or do we want to use the state's designation as a community at risk that would do that? We could put that together with the ordinance adopting the fire hazard severity zone maps.
So we wrote, we changed from having fire codes, or at least part of what we took out of the Fire Code was put into an ordinance. It seems to me the ordinance applied to the WUI. Is that correct, or did it apply just district-wide? For, for our defensible space and all those things we recently did? So do, do we need to create another WUI so we can keep, so our ordinance still applies? If you, I'm going to start over again. My personal opinion is if we, if we say, hey, you know, we've got one set of building codes and, and one set of, you know, defensible space codes for one side of the street and a different code for the other side of the street, we're going to have, you know, riots. And so, well, not that bad, but neighbors won't like each other. Uh, because, you know, hey, how come you can keep your plants and I can't keep my plants? And not only that, if one house catches on fire, it's potentially going to catch the other one anyway. Uh, and all based on some, I'm sure, well-thought-through, but fairly large paintbrush map, is my impression. So I think it would be more reasonable to have, uh, consistent Zone Zero and building code across the whole district. Personally, I, I realize that's going to be, you know, some people don't have a choice, basically, but the, and a very high. But the people who aren't in bad zones will appreciate that clearly. But again, I, I think, you know, the whole community in Palisades burned down. It wasn't, you know, select buildings that happened to be in some zone that somebody painted. Maybe it was all in a very high fire severity zone. I don't know. But, uh, that's my two bits worth. And if it takes making a lot into a WUI or whatever method we have to get there to be able to do that, I would be supportive of that.
So right now, just, just to clarify, our WUI designation and the very high hazard, um, severity zones, they don't correspond to each other, right?
They do. So we took the two thousand seven, two thousand nine maps, and there was a difference. The previous legislation required the state to identify very high in LRA. But what the state did is they also said, in the draft maps, we're going to show you what the high and moderate would look like. So we took the high with the identified two thousand nine very high. We used those two maps to create the WUI FA Wildland Urban Interface Fire Area for the purpose of building construction.
And so, but now with these new maps.
That would change, and that, the, that ordinance, I believe, that we did to create that would go away with the new ordinance adopting the new maps. So because of that change, I still feel that it was important enough for us to do it in twenty for all those areas that have now gone out of what was identified as high in the draft maps, that we should still have a WUI FA designation, or we should still find a way, um, through the communities at risk or a WUI designation with the finding of fact to require the more restrictive building standards district-wide.
Mm-hmm.
And this would, doing it district-wide would be an increase from what was previously done in twenty twenty. Just want to be clear on that.
Uh, Ruben has cut his hand.
Just to answer, I believe, Director Jorgens' question, the, these maps do not impact in any way the existing defensible space ordinance that the, uh, district has adopted that applies district-wide. So that's still in place. That will continue to be, uh, moving forward, as well as the, the field break ordinance that, that also exists district-wide. Neither of those are impacted in any way by the, the, uh, the new fire hazard severity zone maps. Uh, what is impacted, as I understand from the chief, is this issue of what areas are going to be subject to the enhanced building standards, usually called home hardening. And the, the exist, these new maps will continue to have home hardening requirements, certainly for the very high fire hazard severity zones, and I believe also for the high hazard severity zones. But what the chief is indicating is that the, or direction from the board, do we want to establish, or look at the ability to have those standards put in place district-wide? Either by looking at either the communities at risk, which may not cover the entire, uh, district, but also maybe perhaps doing an, basically, an enhanced WUI area that would cover all of the parcels in the district and require the, uh, enhanced building standards.
So I'll, I'm, can I have, ask a question or make a comment? So I, I think, from what I hear, that the, uh, the very high fire severity zones are going to have different, uh, five-foot rules than, uh, or Zone Zero rules, than everything else does. But for the state, we have the authority, if we want to, to make it stricter than that, or broader than that. Um, and, and again, I would propose, and maybe that's not for tonight's question, but I think having district-wide rules is going to be a lot easier than having somebody look on a map and say, "Well, my, half of my house is in and half of my house is out," or, or the guy across the street, or the neighbor next door, or whatever. I, I think we need to, just as a philosophy, apply both the home hardening and the, whatever we're going to do for, for, um, you know, defensive space work, apply that all that district-wide, personally.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree.
Which I think is in line with what you said.
Yes, sir, and I have dove deep into the maps, and to your point, there would be residents that one resident has to do it, left and right, don't have to do Zone Zero, across the street has to do it. one resident has to do it left and right, don't have to do zone zero, across the street has to do it. So there are some of those areas that the map, you look at it and it just leaves you scratching your head.
When, when you see the map and you see the gray area, there's a gray, right?
Yes, sir.
There's moderate and then there's the high and very high. What, what is the, the gray area? Like in my, my street cul-de-sac, my house, which is the end of the cul-de-sac, and two houses next to me are moderate, everything else on my street is gray.
That is, the state has classified that as unzoned local responsibility area. So whatever uh modeling software they use, it didn't trigger it being very high, higher, moderate.
So below those.
So, I mean, on my street particularly, a cul-de-sac, so my house at the very end, kind of up on the hill, is rated differently than the rest of the street.
That's one example of.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, I'm, I'm still not very high, I'm still moderate, cause for, for where I live, but the rest of the street is all gray.
So one of the challenges, uh, you know, I, I don't wanna get too deep into this, cause it's a, but the state methodology had some challenges, uh, and there are critics of the state methodology, I'll just put it that way. Uh, among the oddities of it is they treat buildings, as I understand it, as, as non, what is it? Non-burnable, or I think it's called N B. So if you have a building behind a building, under their methodology, because they're looking, I mean, in fairness to them, they're looking at vegetative, right? This is all, the way they model it is about vegetative risk. So the problem obviously is we've had some experiences that we've seen in other places where buildings catch each other on fire, for example. They're not modeling that. It's not, I mean, it's neither a criticism nor, it's just, it's just true. So one of the real challenges here is the methodology and, you know, obviously that speaks, I, I, you know, this is your, is a policy decision for you guys. But, but it, it speaks to the concern at least that, that, that if you, if you followed the maps directly, whatever you choose to do, if you followed the maps directly, it would lead to some results that, that might actually in reality not really play out.
It sounds like they're modeling sort of open woods and fields and whatever versus urban thing or some suburban things.
Yes, sir, they're modeling struggles to model structure and structure ignition and stuff we've seen in Paradise Palisades and the Eden Fire. The, you know, recently in January, it just.
So that would lead me even more to my position and to our position that.
Yeah.
It needs to be stronger.
I guess to support what you're saying to potentially um require the zone zero in the entire district. I'm, I'm just going back to my street again, cause it makes a lot of, makes more sense. Three houses away from me, where they're in the gray section, this one homeowner um has about twenty eucalyptus in his backyard. The only one on my whole area, and he's in the gray, it does, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, he's, you know, they didn't, didn't go to that detail.
Yeah, case in point.
Yeah, so, you know, there's some, I think there is some, some support for, for doing the whole district. Though we don't need to go there yet, right? We wouldn't even talk about that really until uh January first.
Yes, sir, so.
We have to wait for the, the state, right?
Yeah, I would recommend, let's wait for the state to roll out so we know what's in there.
Yeah.
And the specifics, but when we adopt the new fire hazard severity zone maps, we, I work with council, so we have the language to adopt district wide, the home hardening, the more um restrictive building requirements. And again, then I'll work with Ruben on how we adopt zone zero. And that comes into effect starting, you know, state law, January one. And then if we wanna start enforcing June first of twenty twenty six, you know, that gives staff enough time to figure out how we notice everybody. Cause I think the one clear message from both the city staff and town staff was educate and get that message out.
Right, I think the, the public certainly, I mean, when I look at the, the numbers, I think the almost six thousand parcels that are not in the very high. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look for six thousand people to be here and say, hey, I'm not in the very, the, the, the very high hazard area. Uh, maybe I'll do some things, but I shouldn't have to take down my fences. And so I think I would, I would expect, maybe not, I mean, look, look what's here today, but I would expect those six thousand people to be here saying, hey, you know, it's fifty fifty. So, you know, maybe we don't have to be at the same standard as every, as the others, so.
Well, again, let's, let's just be, let's keep our terms separate. So that's the zones, I think you're talking about the zone zero thing, which is obviously, we know a hot button issue and we are waiting for the state and, and all of that, we get that. What, what uh, what the chief is talking about, though, more at this point is capturing through the wooey, expanded wooey. Uh, uh, the, particularly any new buildings that are built, cause bear in mind, if anybody, if something falls through the cracks, you have a new building, you're gonna live with that building for a long time and it's not built to fire hardened standards, that seems like not a terrific idea. Um, from a safety perspective.
So again, to, to follow on on that point, so I would say, for me anyway, my, my opinion would be we should make the fire, the, the building code and, and the, the home hardening code part of that for everybody. I don't care what zone you're in, cause it's gonna be, it doesn't, as I understand it, it doesn't cost that much more to build it and it makes it a lot safer. So, and, and we can discuss how we wanna do the, the five foot zone later, even though I would, and, and we might have to put six thousand people who own the, of the parcels here. But again, I think so that you wouldn't have a fight with the people three houses away from you that have the eucalyptus trees. I, I would argue that we're, I'm gonna propose at the time that we do, we apply all these things district wide. Because a, as we heard in presentation several months ago, the joint thing we had with Maraga and all that, you know, it's a community thing and the insurance companies look at it as a community. And, you know, they, now they really do when they see Palisades and Aurora and all the other ones that are down there, that the whole place just burned. Um, I, especially with a lot of structure to structure fires, I could tell, it looked like it, anyway. You know, it's gonna be pretty hard to say that, you know, this house needs it and that house doesn't. And plus, what are you gonna do about, gee, my house, everybody says that my house is worth more when I have all my bush as well. So now you're gonna pick winners and losers about how valuable your house is? I don't know, that's, and at the same time, you gotta pick winners and losers about how flammable they are. So I, I, that seems hard to me.
So chief, does that, and do you, did you, do you feel like you have the direction you need? It sounds like there might be a little more, you need to draw down a little more, or are you good?
No, I'm good, the, I think I have the direction.
Would we like to open public comment? So public comment is open. And we do not have any hands raised, we do not have any in-person public comment. The public comment that we've received on our online uh web form was submitted in the packet. We received five public comments at that time. Since then, we've received two additional public comments. Um, on our webpage is a dynamic um link where you can read public comment as it comes in.
I, I would just say that some of the comments, even that we received, some of those comments made some good points, but I think we'll be able to discuss those later. I don't think this is the time for, for some of those.
So just has one quick clarifying question, the chief, you said specimen trees, but if they don't hang over your house? So people that have these big fancy oaks that, you know, are trimmed up appropriately over the house, but you're gonna have to trim them at the, at the edge of the house or something, or?
What the Board of Forestry was discussing, sir, with zone zero was if a tree currently right now, you have to have six feet of vertical clearance from any portion of the roof to the lowest portion of the tree. Uh, Board of Forestry was saying that's gonna increase to ten feet with those trees that are within that five foot zone.
Okay. So potentially still keep some of it at least.
Yes, sir. And, and I think that's a pretty big deal, the green grass, the fences parallel to the house and the single specimen trees. I think that's where they got, the Board of Forestry received a lot of pushback and negative comments.
Great, thank you.
Very good, we will go ahead and move on to item nine point three. Item nine point three is our first reading and introduction of ordinance twenty five oh one, revising a schedule of fees for district services. The staff recommendation is to introduce and waive the reading of ordinance twenty five oh one.
Good evening, directors. The district contracted with Matrix Consulting Group to conduct a comprehensive fee study to align the district schedule of fees with the current costs of fire, providing fire prevention, emergency medical services. The study assessed uh cost recovery levels, provided recommendation for the updated fees and proposed a formal cost recovery. Um, staff had brought this to um the board's attention previously to receive feedback and direction. Staff is now bringing forward the ordinance twenty five dash oh one, which is the fire prevention fees and other district fees um minus the E M S fees. Um, staff, happy to answer any questions about this, recommendations, discuss, deliberate and introduce um and waive the first reading of ordinance twenty five zero one.
I, I think the report uh captured everything we talked about uh from the board direction from January. And I think it was a worthwhile endeavor to uh use Matrix Consulting Group. And I, I think it's well done and I, I would support the uh, the staff recommendation.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree. Shall we go ahead and open public comment? Public comment is open. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
I'll, I'll make a motion to um, to introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number twenty five dash oh one as, as written here.
Second.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. Director Romer.
Hi.
President Hassler.
Hi.
Item nine point four is our first reading and introduction of fee ordinance twenty five zero two, revising the schedule of fees of collection policies for ambulance transport and emergency medical services. Staff recommendation is to introduce and waive the first reading of twenty five zero two.
Good evening, directors. Ordinance twenty five zero two is um continuation of what we previously discussed. This is the E M S fees that were recommended by our consultant after they reviewed everything. Again, uh, staff brought this to the board's attention previously to receive the report from Matrix and to uh seek input. Uh, staff has uh taken that input, made uh any, any changes that were suggested by the board. And we also uh recommend, you know, discussing and approving and waiving the first reading of the ordinance.
Did we make motions or have comments?
Uh, is there any board discussion?
I, I just have one general question. I seem to remember when uh, when Matrix uh made their presentation to us and we looked at all the fees that they looked at. I seem to recall that we had some fees that were higher. Were we gonna lower those or did we lower any?
Yes, sir. If we, if our previous fees were above what Matrix study showed they should be, we did lower.
We did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all.
So I move we uh.
Shall we open public comment? So we will open public comment. And we do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
I move we waive the first reading and approve nine point four, yeah, as written.
I'll second it.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorkin.
Hi.
Director Romer.
Hi.
President Hassler.
Hi.
Item nine point five, approve the uh cost recovery policy.
Good evening, directors. As part of uh the contract with Matrix, they um, when they reviewed everything, they came back to us and recommended that we have a cost recovery policy. That was also discussed with the board back in January um with the draft cost recovery. We received direction from the board, we worked with council to uh update and incorporate all comments uh from the board. And that is in the staff report there for your review. Staff recommends discuss, deliberate and approve the cost recovery policy. The one change that we did make that I felt appropriate was to make it a district wide cost recovery policy, not just specific for E M S fees or fire prevention fees, but it's cost recovery policy district wide. So that is the one change from the January fifteenth meeting.
For discussion?
I thought it was very, very well done.
Yeah, good job.
Again, as I said before, I think the uh hiring of Matrix was a, was a, a good decision. And I think we're getting uh a, a stronger uh district policies out of it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Shall we open public comment? Public comment is open. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment. Have a motion?
So I move that we uh approve item nine point five.
I second it.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. Director Romer.
Hi.
President Hassler.
Hi.
Item nine point six, single role ambulance staffing plan.
Good evening, directors. At the February board meeting, staff brought forward uh budget adjustment to begin hiring the ambulance supervisor for the uh single role ambulance. Uh, board directed staff to uh come back with a costing um and a better timeline of what the implementation of the single role ambulance um would look like. We have that in the staff report uh in phases with the cost. So phase one, hiring of initial personnel and development of training. The plan would be to hire this ambulance supervisor, unrepresented employee, have them starting uh July first with the new fiscal year. They would develop the A D M, eighty hour ambulance uh academy curriculum and start building that foundation for us to hire the three senior uh role paramedics and the uh three E M Ts. The target date to bring them onboard would be October first. And if they came on October first, we're looking at uh potentially two weeks of training before they start staffing the ambulance. Uh, the cost of phase one cost would be two hundred and seven thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and seven thousand and twenty one dollars. Um, starting at the new fiscal year, uh, July one. Phase two implementation of single role is to staff uh medic forty five A, that's the personnel that are hired in uh phase one, eliminates the stipend for local twelve thirty members on engine forty five. We implement the supervisor stipend for captain on engine forty five. We hire three additional single role paramedics. These are not uh senior paramedics um as the first hiring. And we hire eight uh limited term, single role E M Ts. The plan would be to bring them on around the first of the year. And the reason we're not bringing them on concurrent with the medic uh forty five or the initial staff is we know there's stuff that we don't know. So let's get the first ambulance staffed, uh, medic forty five. Let's have them run from October through January, that's through the holiday season. We can learn the lessons that we need to learn, see what's working, what's not working. We can tweak the system to bring the additional employees on um January one. And that phase two cost is six hundred and sixty four thousand. Uh, there's a phase three implementation, which is to staff two additional ten hour flex ambulances, uh, medic forty one, forty five uh B L S, eliminate firefighter, paramedic staffing on um forty one and associated ambulance stipend. Um, implement ambulance supervisor stipend for captains on engine forty one, reduce daily local twelve thirty staffing minimum uh to fifteen mid-January, once the uh additional single role staff has been um placed in service. Um, that phase three A cost is forty five thousand dollars. Um, there is a phase three B, that's to hire three additional limited term E M T interns. Um, that cost is sixty thousand dollars. So that is the plan that we would like to implement and work to implement. Um, understanding that there's things out there that we don't know that could change those dates, push them back um a little bit. Um, happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
So I just wanted to see if I understand what, so I, I think what we're doing is we're, we're hiring a supervisor, so that's great. And then we're, we're hiring more, um, we're, we're, the end of the day, we're gonna have, and we currently have one full-time ambulance and the rest of its, you know, um, other, you know, other kinds of equipment that responds. We're gonna end up having that staffed now with single role. We're going to end up having that staffed now with single role EMTs. We're going to have another full-time ambulance, effectively two actually. So we can have three on during the day and one on at night. So we'll have basically one full-time ambulance, but we're really going to deploy it a little more effective, effectively than that. And the overall cost of all of this, including, you know, moving the firefighters off of the ambulance and to do only firefighter work on the one that forty-one. And it's going to cost us about a half million dollars a year to add to basically triple the covers that we, the effective coverage that we have today. That's, as I did the math, that's how it all worked out, which seems like a good deal to me.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't know about those numbers that you used about the cost of this versus what we have. I mean, we, we haven't really seen that specifically. And I think probably at some point when we get a report from the, the new supervisor and budget and, you know, how it's all going to play out, I think we'll see that, but.
Yes, sir. There's going to be an initial cost because we're going to have, phase one brings on medic forty-five, twenty-four hours a day with single role staff. So we will have two twenty-four hour ambulances. As we transition that single role staffing to medic forty-one, we take the firefighters off the ambulance and place them on the engines. There's an, um, a savings there when those employees go, our daily, our daily staffing will go from seventeen to fifteen. Savings there as well.
And would, would, would we start trying to hire the, the, I guess, manager as soon as we give you approval? I mean, July first is soon to have somebody.
Yes, sir. We're six to eight weeks on our hiring process. So if this, if the board likes this timeline and this process, we would get that position flown to go through the hiring process to have them start July first. Chances are it's going to be after the July fourth holiday in all reality. But yeah, we'd like to have them on because that's a very short window for them to get with county EMS to start building the foundation for that, that program to bring the additional staff on in October.
Yeah, three months, right? They've got three months to get everything. Yeah, that's tight.
If after the three months, I mean, three years, or there, excuse me, three periods, would we have a similar operating group to San Ramon or to Berkeley who have?
Our, our delivery system would be similar, that we have single roles and they have single role staff that are staffing their ambulance. So yes, sir.
And, and San Francisco as well. They use the same model.
And I think we had talked about using some consultant or an employee or whatever from the, that did this in San Francisco to help design a lot of this, right?
Yes, sir. We do have him on contract right now. He's helping, he helped build this timeline and he's beginning to build that foundation that the supervisor once hired wouldn't continue building.
But these costs are just employee costs, right? Not consulting costs to.
Correct. These are just employee costs.
Do we need to public comment?
Any further discussion? We will go ahead and open public comment. And we do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
So I will enthusiastically move that we approve the nine point six as stated.
I second the motion.
Just to provide information, staff, actually, we don't need a motion.
Okay.
And if I may, directors, we would build this into this next fiscal year's budget to have these positions funded based on the timeline.
But you wanted our guidance to know that we were going to approve that eventually.
Yes, sir. Wanted. We'll take that as enthusiastic support for.
Yes, exactly. Okay.
Hey, where, where do you see, I mean, right now, um, the ambulance supervisor, where would they be in the org chart? Is they, they, with the deputy chief or?
No, sir. We put them actually underneath the battalion chiefs, kind of at a, a captain level with supervision. And that was one question the operation staff has had. Hey, will this ambulance supervisor, how does discipline work? They would still have to follow the chain of command through the battalion chiefs.
That makes sense.
And the org chart's available on our website.
It was presented in the.
With the, with that edit, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Perfect. Good job.
Next item, next item is nine point seven, receive status update on the new investment advisor search.
Staff has a guest presenter tonight on this item, Director Jorgens.
So, um, you know, I, just because the staff was super busy and this is something that I, I felt strongly about. I was, I went out and found one party before we talked to US Bank. And I think Jim Ross talked about, gave me the recommendations that US Bank had of people advisors that they already were working with on these same kinds of trusts. And before that I had contacted one in Southern California and it turned out our trusts were too small for them. They, they gave us a bit of ten basis points to manage it and, and we're okay with the kinds of direction, you know, and they thought are to be approved, um, you know, investment guidelines would be fine as long as we were investing in, and, you know, like the S and P five hundred and other index kinds of funds. And so they kind of went off the table, then calling the five people that were on the US Bank list. One of them returned my call, which was really encouraging. And they actually were willing to do the same thing. Oh, they, they were willing to do exactly the same thing as the other one that said we were too small. And the other people I called several times left messages. And I guess they must have all thought that we were too small or didn't look us up or didn't care. I don't know what the answer was, but I, I tried hard and they just, you know, there aren't a lot of people that, these are small. You know, when you think about how much money they're going to make a year at ten basis points, it's like eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, it's trivial amount of money for somebody to have to do all the work they're going to do. And, and it's basically the same amount of work, no matter how much money you're doing, you just add a zero to the numbers, you know? So it's not, or two zeros or three zeros, because sometimes they work in billions of dollars. So we are, much like with our accounting and other things, we are severely subscale in, in finding advisors to do this stuff for us. So we do have one though that is enthusiastic about starting the relationship and our funds are getting bigger as, as we go along. So, um, we're currently paying, I think, twenty-five basis points, Gloria, I can be honest here, but I think it's currently roughly twenty-five basis points to have somebody do the management of, you know, give us advice on this. And it's what, but they currently are, I, last time we had a meeting and they were here presenting several months ago, they, they said they didn't want our business if we didn't want to let them have pretty free hand on what they were doing with investments. And they'd been making investments that were significantly less, um, had lower returns than, than the S and P five hundred as an example. So, um, as I understand it, been talking to our lawyers, we have to modify a few of our documents to make sure that we are allowed to, you know, take one asset manager or investment advisor out, put a different one in. There are some modifications that we, we can bring back, you know, that are perfunctory in my opinion. Uh, and we, there are a couple of tweaks in the contract that the, that we were presented the draft contract from the actual advisor. But otherwise we can at least bring it forward next time to have further discussion with the board about whether it's, I think we've already had a lot of discussion about whether it's a good idea or not. But at least now I think we have a viable, and they do advise, I don't know, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of these trusts for US Bank already. In other words, they're one of the ones recommended by US Bank, which is our, Jim, keep me, tell, tell me what the, what the function US Bank is. Are they the trustee at the end of the day?
Yes, they're the trustee.
Yep. So and then there, so there's the trustee, then there are investment advisors, and then there's us. And we, we give, you know, the, the guidelines that we want, that they have to buy into and, and agree are okay. And then they actually do manage the funds for us and give us reports every, every morning months they're required to give us reports. And I told them that, you know, we didn't really care if they flew up. One of the things that makes it cheaper is I said, we can do a Zoom call instead of having you fly up here from, I think they're actually in Seattle, but the other ones used to fly up from LA and that just all costs us money. And, you know, we can see them on a Zoom call as well as we can in person, in my opinion. So they were willing to do it for what I consider a low fee, but also follow the guidance, guidance that we will potentially agree to.
So it may be, uh, just for, for the board's assistance, it may be helpful for Jim to spell out what steps would be necessary in order to effectuate this. Uh, again, we're not acting tonight, but just, just so you, you know what they are. Sorry.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first, the district's going to need, excuse me, uh, it's going to need to modify the district's existing investment policy for the section one fifteen trusts. Uh, at minimum to remove the references to PM, PFM asset management. Uh, I think it makes sense to look to see if there are other changes that need to be made at this time. There's two agree, two agreements with pars and US Bank. There's the adoption agreement and the trust agreement. Both of those will need to be amended. And then there is some clarifying language with the agreement with the investment advisor that will need to, uh, to change. My, my only comment on the timeline is, you know, it's out of our control how quickly pars and US Bank move on the amendments, uh, but the rest of it will do as quickly as we can.
Well, pars is the one that told us they didn't want to represent us anymore, right? So hopefully that'll be easy.
Hopefully.
We could always just fire them, I suppose.
Any discussion by the board? Shall we go ahead and open public comment? Public comment is now open. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
So I guess just, just, I want to be clear because we are requesting guidance for coming back. Is there a consensus on the board for us to move forward to prepare these documents for next session?
I, I, I'm opposed to it. So I, I don't know about other directors, but I, I, I'm more in favor of staying with pars and, and not going forward with this.
I think it's appropriate.
This is Director Romer. I really appreciate all the effort that Director Jorgens put into finding this alternative. I think it's a, I think it's a promising alternative and I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it. All right, then we'll return next month. Uh, actually, you know, now that I think about it, um, why don't we put this on, uh, if we're going to end up with a special meeting? Because obviously this is Director Jorgens', uh, concept, uh, that maybe we should have it on the meeting when you're back.
Fine with me.
May meeting or the special?
The special meeting.
The special meeting.
Special meeting, just make more sense since we're going to have a special meeting anyway.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Item nine point eight, discussion of board rules or procedure, regular meeting start times and virtual participation by the presiding officer.
Good evening, directors. During the February nineteenth board meeting, a director requested that an item be placed on the agenda to review the district's rules of procedures for board meetings and related functions, considering potential adjustments to the start times for the regular meetings as well as whether the presiding officer must attend in person or may preside virtually. The current start times for the regular board meetings are addressed in rules and procedures under section one point one. The second item regarding whether the presiding officer must be physically present is not currently addressed in the rules of procedures. If changes are to be considered, language would need to be drafted for potential inclusion to that. Staff recommends discuss, deliberate and provide direction to staff. We're happy to do whatever the board wishes.
President.
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I asked for this to be on there. You know, the first item was to, we, since I've been on the board at least, and I don't know if it's been like that since the district was, uh, was begun, but, um, we've always started our regular meeting at seven o'clock. I've noted that other surrounding districts, um, many of them have, um, their meetings in the afternoon. And, um, I just took, I asked a few of the directors, what do you think about changing the time at least to an earlier time? I suggested six thirty or could be, you know, could be six o'clock. And, um, there seemed to be, you know, some very informal, hey, well, we, we can talk about it, that, what people said. So I'm, I'm just bringing that up for discussion right now to change our rules and procedures as, as it's stated here to a time, you know, I'd, I'd say either six thirty or six o'clock for right now on that item. And the second item was, um, since, since we have Zoom now and, um, it, it, it's not addressed in our rules and procedures about the presiding officer. I, I, I feel strongly that presiding officer should be present in, in the actual facility where we're having the meeting and not be able to preside, preside while they're on Zoom. I think you lose a lot, um, when you're on Zoom. You know, you can't, we, we don't have much public here today, but, you know, you can't read the, the public. It's difficult to, um, call on people on the board to, to run a meeting. I think when you're on Zoom would be, is difficult. I know we all, we did it during the pandemic when we only had Zoom meetings. And I think that was a unique situation, but I would like to, suggest that we change our rules, uh, rules and, well, not change it, but revise them to, to state that in order to preside at a meeting, that you have to be physically present and not being able to do it by Zoom. That's, that's two things I have. That's it.
So I'm just going to raise my hand. I would agree with you. I think starting at six is fine. I mean, I work and I can make it by six. I can make it by five if we have closed sessions, so.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that personally. Are, are there any constraints that anybody knows about, like lawyers here, about whether there are issues with the public being able to be here in time? Because I think, you know, we, in the really old days, nobody, here's another example, nobody ever showed up. But people do show up on Zoom. I, I mean, you know, I think we even have today. So, you know, we can't really just look at the audience here. We, we have to look every place. And so I, I just, you know, we, we do want to make sure we keep our meetings open and, and accessible to the public at, at a reasonable time. So as long as you think, people think we're meeting that criteria also in addition to our schedules, that's fine with me.
Yeah, just to, just for inference, uh, San Ramon, uh, usually meets at one o'clock in the afternoon. And Contra Casa County is the board of supervisors, which also meets in the afternoon. So.
I think like the Maraga City Council starts at five is when they start their meeting, so.
Yeah, just seem, you know, it seems like, you know, tonight it, it looks like we're going to get out of here at a reasonable hour, but.
We often don't.
Huh?
We often don't.
We often don't. And I just think, you know, by the time it starts hitting ten o'clock or sometimes eleven or after eleven, and sometimes people are, are attending the meeting on Zoom and they might be on the East Coast. You know, you, you did that, I think, last month maybe.
It was a bummer.
I mean, it was probably one or two in the morning. Uh, I just think it makes sense.
I'd be in favor of the earlier time.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is Director Romer. I also agree with Director Danziger that I'm totally flexible on the time and I'm willing to consider afternoon, five o'clock, whatever, as long as it doesn't interfere with other board members who have, who are still, uh, have full-time jobs and are trapped with their jobs and it would, you know, be an inconvenience to them. With regard to the presiding officer being personally present, I also agree with Director Danziger, uh, that you, there really is an advantage to the presiding officer being present. And when I was on the board, uh, I think that there was at least one occasion where I wasn't able to, to be there in person, but I was available on remote. And I asked him, I, I think I asked the next in line to, to do it. But I don't think that that needs to be required. In other words, I, I don't think that that is such a hard and fast rule that we should tie our, uh, limit our options because there are conceivably, conceivably situations where particularly if, if we're short of a, a quorum or we barely have a quorum and then one person is attending by remote, then I don't think we need to put in concrete into the rules that it's a requirement, particularly if people are, are flexible about giving up, uh, you know, presiding off. If, if, if the president is available only by remote, that he, you know, voluntarily cedes the opportunity to preside to, uh, you know, the, the vice. You know, presiding, if if the president is available only by remote, that he, you know, voluntarily cedes the opportunity to preside to, you know, the the vice president. That's all.
Yeah, I I, oh, sorry. I I was just going to say it is really hard on Zoom, though, to
I think so.
stay focused on the meeting even, let alone preside, but that's me. So I think I agree, maybe not the hard and fast rule, but I don't know if you can put a preference in that the preferences that that I don't, I don't know if we can do that.
Maybe the, maybe a new rules and procedures can be written somehow.
Maybe, just as a thought, maybe just say if the vice president is in there in person, that the the vice president will do it. But but not necessarily go all the way down the chain necessarily, you know, at least you have a reasonable alternative if the if the president's going to be gone, if the vice president is in person, then the then the vice president would be doing it.
Well, we have a, we now have a vice president and a second vice president. So maybe it would be if either of those are in the room. Right, because last last meeting.
By definition, one of the three have to be.
You weren't here, I get it.
You did it, yeah, that's true, it worked, yeah, I'm fine with that.
So maybe it just goes in order of if, obviously, if the president's there, president's presiding officer. If if president's not there, then it goes to the vice, first vice president. If neither was there, then it goes to the second vice president.
And if you get past that, we don't have a quorum.
But after that, you don't have a quorum, so exactly, you don't have to go any further.
I think that's, I think that's the way to do it. And as far as the meeting time, I heard six o'clock, I'm I'm okay with six.
I'm good with six. I think that's better.
All right, just recognize, of course, you will have closed sessions at five then, just to. I can do that, yeah. That's what I was thinking, I said.
Right.
Okay with that. I, yeah, actually, I mean, I drive out early because traffic gets bad, so it's better for me.
Hey, there we go.
Okay. We're agreed on the times and I, we're sort of agreed on the, you know, establishing as a informal norm that the presiding officer prefer is someone who's present. But I still don't think that we have to make it a rule.
Well. I I think we do. And, well, you can bring it back on a, you know, a draft and we can talk about it at that point to see the language, but.
So I just wanted to comment about the start time. Right now in our rules or procedure, our closed session has an option, a range of starting because sometimes our closed session items may take longer than an hour. So are we comfortable with saying closed session may start between four and five? Four or five and open session starts at six?
Do we, do we have?
Very good point, and I agree. I'm I'm willing to start as as early as four on the occasions when it's necessary.
Do we have to say that or can we just say preceding the regular scheduled meeting?
I I think we generally do specify it in order to have, I think, we have to require in order for a regular meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because we have to start the, right, we'd have to start the regular meeting at four.
We need, I mean, although we've gotten really good at going fast, but. But we have advanced notice, right? I mean, so we have
Correct.
Four or five days.
Correct.
Four, so.
Correct. And it's rare, but sometimes, and in order to not have to call a special meeting, you can say, you know, closed session may start, you know, four or five. Right now in our rules, it says five or six and then open session is seven. But that allows that flexibility.
And we also, if it didn't work for somebody, we could also tackle, you know, part of it on to the end of the meeting, too.
You can.
Well, yeah, just, you know, in case it didn't work for somebody. So I guess maybe what I would say is, at least informally, we should, if we're going to do something other than five, call the people and make sure that it's okay. And I think that I can't even think of a time that's happened, actually, you know, that that we've actually had more than an hour.
Yeah, no, that that makes a lot of sense. And and there are many places that come back into closed session after, that's 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 not uncommon.
Yes.
Thank you, that was my only question.
That's great.
Okay, so I think that was disgusting, right?
One question, if I may, directors. Marcia, are you aware of anything that would change with the?
Our location here, yeah.
I believe it would be, I do need to confirm with the reservations of the room. But right now, I I think that it should be fine.
Okay, because you guys get here really early anyway.
Knock on wood.
And so.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, so I just needed, I would need to make sure that I could reserve the room earlier to provide enough time for setup.
Okay, so the process would be we revise and then approve. Is that, this this will be an open session item in your next, in your next meeting. And so if if there's a problem arises in the interim, we'll 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 figure out what to do and and come back to you.
Great. On to committee reports.
So we do need to open, well, that concludes our our board discussion. We do need to open a public comment. We do not have any hand raised or in-person comment. And we'll proceed on to committee reports, the standing audit committee.
We've scheduled or would like to schedule the audit committee after rather than before suggesting perhaps preceding the next board, well, the
May.
May board meeting.
Because the interim audit, our understanding is is occurring April seventh, the week of April seventh?
Correct, the week of April seven.
And we said we could do it before or after and in advance of the board meeting would be preferable time in May.
In May.
So meaning on the board meeting date in May? Okay, all right.
Or two, if if we, if it's possible to do it right here in like the room or something.
Yes, so immediately preceding the board meeting basically in May.
Yes.
Understood, okay, so I'll check with the auditors and we'll try to get that scheduled. Thank you.
I mean, it could be at one of the fire stations. I mean, it didn't really, there's only what, five people, six people? So if they wanted, you don't need to schedule, although we could do it here.
Understood, thank you.
Moving on to the joint fire prevention ad hoc committee.
We have not had a meeting since our last meeting, so.
And we're scheduled the 21st, I think, does that sound right?
Of?
April?
That sounds right.
That sound right, Jeff, do you remember?
I think it's before the 15th.
Before, was it the 12th or the 25th?
I think it's the 12th, otherwise I wouldn't have made it.
Okay, I.
And it is posted on our website.
Okay, so yeah, we have one scheduled, that's all, yeah.
Moving on to the ad hoc committee, Station 45.
We have already had a discussion tonight about everything we talked about.
Very good. I will open public comment on the committee reports. And we do not have any public comment. Do we have any future agenda items?
Yes. I have one, it's a, and I'll need to work with you on this. For the next meeting, I'm hoping, it's an MOU between UC Master Gardeners and MOFD for landscaping project at Station 42. The the Master Gardeners require an MOU to set forth what we'll be doing and what your responsibilities are. And it's a template I have that I will work on and then I'll share it with you.
Do we have any other future?
I have one more, but it, I would just like to, it's, it's, doesn't have, yeah, it needs, I would like to see it addressed, but it doesn't need to be a separate item. It can be in the fire chief report. I'd like to see the stat, the, whatever stats you can get on our district CWS signups.
That's good, yeah, I like that.
We haven't seen that in a long time. It's been
Couple of years.
Probably a couple of years. I just, I'm curious to see what the numbers look like compared to when we saw it a few years ago. That's all. So maybe fire prevention can do it or, you know, whatever.
Yes, sir, we'll get.
I think the data is very, because we we heard some of that, we heard a horrendous part of it at the last meeting. And I think it's, you know, we're in like the 80%.
Yes, it's getting.
But we need to think, maybe, maybe not just hearing what it is, but what we're going to do to address the last 20% we don't have.
There you go. Yeah.
Because, you know, we had suggested in the past, for example, talking to escrow agents that, because there are only a handful of escrow agents around. And so every time somebody buys a new house, here's part of the package we give you, you know, here's all the stuff to sign up for the, you know, the new rules for your your house and don't, don't scrape the the stuff back up, you know, the mulch back up by your house. And by the way, here's how you sign up.
Yeah.
Just simple things. And here's how you get refunds on, you know, chipper days and whatever, you know, just something to hand out.
I have have one more, too. It also could be part of somebody's report, has to do with evacuation zones, the zone haven. I would just like to know a little bit more about those. So I know, I know what my zone is. I don't know anybody, other people on the board, maybe not, I'm seeing no, yes, maybe. So I'd just like to know how important that that is, that that our community, that each individual property owner knows what their zone is? And how that, I mean, I know it's, I know Marcia's going to say it's on our website, I know it is. But besides the website, how important is that? And like, if we get notices on the CWS system, is this going to say for me, Zone 025, which I am leave, or is it going to say my street? Or I don't know how that all works. And I would, I would just like to hear a little bit more. It could be a report, you know, on the just informational report or you can just report out on it. I'd just like to know a little bit more, so, because people ask me and I I really don't know.
So I guess my clarifying question on that at least, because I'm, I think it's a great question. So when when you do get it, I think the ones I've gotten in the past, when we had drills and whatever, they, you know, your phone has a message on it that says, you know, evacuate or, you know, get, I think, so far all of it said is you have a message, you know, or there's a test. But the question is, if you're, do you really need to know your zone or do they need to know your zone so they know when to, so they can target only the people in the zone or is their zone much bigger than that?
Yeah, on your, on your, you know, model that you did your test, I I saw zone numbers on there. I was looking for mine, I didn't see it on there, but there were zone numbers and I don't know if people know, most people probably don't know what zone they're in.
Or if it really is only an internal thing that says, here's the people we want to notify and you guys need to know that so they know where to send the signals to. And all we know, need to know is we're supposed to evacuate or we're supposed to have an evacuation warning, which to me sounds like enough personally, but, because what's on, I mean, if they tell me that and what zone I'm in, I'm not sure that's going to help me a lot.
Understood, we will
Okay.
get that information down.
Somehow, however you want to give it to it.
Yes, sir.
I move adjourned.
And before we adjourn, we do need to open public comment and we do have one hand raised.
Oh, wow.
James Duff.
Hello, directors, James Duff, employee of Arinda, resident of Moraga. I just wanted to provide a little bit of information for you in regards to the MOFD Arinda two by two. That date is April Monday. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any more hands raised.
Now I'll move adjourned.
We have a second. Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Dex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens.
Hi.
Director Romer.
Hi.
President Hassler.
Hi.
Time is 9:21.
Thank you, everyone. Didn't take your nine o'clock raise.